Bell set.
Yeah.
Complete ordinance. Flag.
To the public which stands one nation under God, community is all with liberty and justice for all.
Scott, can you hear me okay? I think it's the microphone.
Okay.
The microphone is really nobody here really make an example, but anyway. And yeah, adjustments to the order of the current agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add in Executive Session Number four, five, six, eight. Can we meet in please?
Second. I have. The other night at that meeting on Zoom. Are people from Rundle able to, if they call you, sign in on Zoom to hear, to watch the meetings?
For which meetings?
These meetings.
No, we're only taping these meetings.
We're only taping these meetings, okay.
Then they can, they, they can, I usually, depending on the following morning, I usually upload it so they can see it the following day.
Okay, so we have no ability or, or idea about being able to even Zoom these meetings so that people could watch them or even comment the way Kenny Bunk does.
We can, we can Zoom them if you prefer to Zoom them live, I can Zoom them live.
Okay, so we could, we just don't.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, because I had someone ask what we do, because I guess Kenny Bunk does do theirs live and Zoom, and even, somebody told me even on Zoom, they can sign in on Zoom to either just listen or to participate. And, and I said, well, we don't Zoom hours at all, apparently we have no requests for Zoom, so we don't.
Right, I haven't had no requests to do anything different than we have.
Yep.
I do track the, I think John does too, we do track the view viewership. The biggest viewership we had was the planning board and board of selectmen's from the other meeting in 20 that saw that one, so usually it's about anywhere between nine and 14.
And that was a live meeting that wasn't Zoomed?
No, that wasn't, that wasn't live, no.
It wasn't, just Zoomed?
Yep.
Okay.
Per state statute, we can't do what Delmar had mentioned.
Well, yeah, if Kenny Bunk is taking questions over Zoom, I, I think they're, they're sort of stretching what the statute says. I think the statute is quite clear, they need to be here in person asking their questions, having everybody hear their dialogue, not to be confused in any way of what they're talking about, so.
The RSU School Board does both meetings, because I have zoomed in on, and if I have a question, I can, I can just hit the button that says raise my hand, and they'll take my question. Everybody hears the question, everybody hears the answer.
Not quite, yeah, I am really leery of that.
Yeah.
I'll do whatever you guys want, I think you, I, I think we're I, I don't think we, statutorily, we have the protection that people think we, that they have, maybe other attorneys are interpreting it differently, but.
Well, it just says for the meeting tonight, it just says Zoom taping, and that's all it says is Zoom taping.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, so I'm taking the meeting, and after tonight, folks can watch the meeting. And they can't comment, they can't do anything, but they, it's sort of recording it like we, like we used to do with the YouTube when we were down the other way, we're recording it, people can see and observe what's going on, and then participate another time if they so desire, call us, say they have a subject matter they want to talk about, that kind of thing.
Okay, so I guess it just depends on what towns attorneys told those towns, because some are doing it one way and, and some are doing it another.
Some people aren't asking questions.
Yeah, that could be. Yeah.
Right. People staying home after the board, just when they were here.
Yeah. Well, I know that the RSU Finance Committee, I don't know how the School Board is working, but the Finance Committee is having meetings there in the room, people are there in the room, and but you can Zoom in, you can go on Zoom, and again, on Zoom, you can participate, because you can ask questions, everybody goes in the room, and those on Zoom can all hear you, so it's a joint meeting, it's like having one big meeting, and I wondered how they could do it. I don't know how the Kenny Bunk selectmen do theirs.
Unless they have, unless they have the remote participation policy that we have, where one of you could say, hey, look, I'm not going to make it, I'm out of town,
Yep.
but I want to participate, then we would have to agree to that, then we could Zoom the meeting, and we'd have to open it to the public for their comments,
Yep.
and so everybody could participate that way.
That's like getting around, it's like getting around the rule.
Well, yeah, I think the other boards are looking at the word emergency.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's what the statute says, and even though the governor has lifted the emergency declaration, they're still saying we've got a COVID emergency there. That's the thing.
Yeah. Okay, I just wondered.
That could very well be.
Thank you.
The, the meetings are played back on YouTube and not Zoom.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And Nelson, but yeah, um, agenda, vote minutes, April 11th, April 19th.
I make a motion, we approve the April 11th and the April 19th minutes as submitted.
The discussion, done, favor.
I can vote on April 11th, but not on April 19th, I'll abstain.
Yes, I think it's going down the table right now, the proclamation for the Cox Recreation Month to July. As, as you folks were nice enough to pick up that we certainly had a mistake in there, we corrected that, so you folks can sign it. I'll make sure that the recreation director receives that, and whatever other publicity we need to do, that's certain good. I'm not quite sure if you all had the opportunity, John, as you know, John was at your meeting, and we sort of went ahead and gave him the go-ahead to, to update our website. He's done that, he's provided a copy via the, on the computer, hopefully you've all had an opportunity to look at it. I sort of like it, it seems very user-friendly to me, things seem to be in order, and then we can add or subtract things as we move through, I sort of really like it better than our existing website, simply because the existing one seems, it's awful confusing, you've got various locations to go get things, and I think John has sort of put those in a category that makes it a lot easier. I, I don't know what else we, we need to do, but I'd love to be able to transfer onto the new format and move forward with that, because I like it, but I'm not sure what you all want to do.
No, I like it too, I went through it and, and it was, seemed to be very easy to navigate.
Yeah, same here, I mean, I, I would make a motion that we move forward with, with whatever needs to be done to, to turn it over into the new website.
I'll second that.
I'm fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nice job. Thank you for that. Yeah, that was great chat.
Yeah.
I did a whole question, but I talked to the government last week, they said normally go live on the website, send it maybe, on the line, the corner. Do we leave every time, we all prove and ensure that everything was being transferred, being transferred from the old site?
What I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll talk to everybody tomorrow, and have them either contact you via email if something else happens to be added. I know the town clerk and I had spoken about a couple of things that weren't there, and I told him to go ahead and get ahold of you and get them on, so I'm sure they've already been included, so. Undo it to the rest of the staff just to make sure, and then, you know, from that point on, as soon as we can, I guess we'll make a transfer. After you vote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm making a motion, something to uncheck of all, department extra, that'll be, once that's done.
Yeah, and I'll second that again.
Favor.
Thank you, John.
So, the final content, say like long and long, that should all be done.
I think so. I think we have the flexibility too, John, is if we find something that's left off, we should just get ahold of you and you can add it, correct?
Well, my worry is that there is something that's on the old website, and that will be a problem, once they make a switch.
We lose everything.
About that old website, okay, everything's gone, I know, I assumed that the 99% of stuff, the problem, the confidence, right? All wrong, obviously, I just thought if I approved, checked, and wanted to go back.
Is there a way, John, that we can do a backup of that, and then, and we have Gov, whatever it is, have them hold on to it for a little bit?
Not very bad. Do a backup of all the PDF files, you know, that has copies of amendments, and chapters, and all that. That gets a little, a little, and that's exactly, that's the stuff that keep the, have copies of.
Right.
So, I, I, rather than, you know, rather than front the back of the files and all that, you know, back.
It's not like we, we don't have the documents that are in there anyways, right, so. Everything that's in there, we have copies of, or should.
Should. Should be okay, if we could just call, or say, oh, that's good. Okay.
Yep. Yeah. Yes.
Thanks, very nice.
Good day, John.
Yep.
Um, just to give you an update, I talked to Brian Keizer at DOT, referenced the the traffic signals, um, here's obviously planning stage, it looks like, I thought it was going to be this year, it looks like it's next year. They're planning, and they'll go out to bid, get a contractor, and start the, start the work, so, not this year, but next year.
So we haven't seen an initial plan yet as to what they're going to?
No plans yet, other than, you know, whatever they're going to do, I know, they're going to make sure that the preemption system for emergency vehicles is there. So, there won't be an issue there, other than that, not quite sure what else we've got.
I just want to see the new plan for the, the Limerick Road Route One.
Sure.
Yeah.
See the realignment of the lights.
See what they're going to do, yeah.
And then, circling back, I, I think we talked about this last year, about where CMP had contacted me about moving over to all LED conversion of all streetlights, and it would require us to not pay anything, but sign up for a 15-year agreement with them. We, we knew that the lights aren't actually owned by us, they are owned by CMP, we just pay for the, the power that, that they use, so. They contacted me again, we had that conversation again, and I got assurances that there's no need for us to, to do the LED conversion, sign the agreements, because once the high-pressure sodium fail, they're going to replace it with LEDs anyway. So it'll be a, just a step process, no cost to us, we don't have to sign any other agreements. I reconfirmed with the Public Works Superintendent Roger that the streetlights that we have now are the ones that we need, so there's no other need to add anymore at this point, so.
Here from the Rundle Historical Society for large office safe, main office counter, two horizontal filing cabinets, all bullet boards, clear display pockets of this wall, and folding chairs and box of aerial photos on the second floor. $1 bid associated with all of those. $7, it looks like. Michelle Allen. Like to offer $30 for all the filing cabinets at indoc 4622. Know what that means?
Yes, her and I visited the site, I showed her the file cabinets, so she knows the ones, there are, there are three, four, four drawer file cabinets in the general assistance office, and then there's one fireproof four drawer in the deputy treasurer's office.
The Historical Society doesn't want those, that's not on their list?
They have two drawer horizontal filing cabinets.
Right, there's a small two drawer that's in the main office that they, that they would like to have, yeah.
Yeah, because I think that the Historical Society, when they're thinking fireproof, they're thinking that evolved, that's why they want that safe.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, there's a bunch of folding chairs that are downstairs in the basement, that they would like to, to take. How much was your bid, $30?
$30.
$30 for Michelle.
Make a motion, we accept both bids? Yeah, they're separate, they're all separate items, right? Yeah.
Yep.
I'll second your motion. So, the vote minutes, Dan said?
Yes.
As. Loaded here, okay. All in favor of selling the items to the Historical Society, Michelle Allen, based upon the bid that's submitted.
I can be in favor of Michelle's, but I'll have to abstain from the Historical Society. It's now they're going to figure out how to get the safe out of there.
Well, yeah, I'll have the challenges there. I did have one furniture company come by, and they sell, I guess we could talk about it now, the process, they sell the old town clerk's desk as one of their, the equipment that they generally sell, and they would be interested in purchasing that from the town. So, I'll go ahead and contact them, and we'll sell that as well. I haven't had any other takers on some of the other items in there, there are a few other items. I don't think they're, they're worth a heck of a lot, except for my old office desk would be the only thing that would be worth something, so, maybe we can secure somebody that would like to take that as well, and get some money for that, so.
Ask the Historical Society, they may be able to use that desk.
They said it was too big.
Oh.
Mine was too big, so, and those are the only other items that I saw in there that that they have any value, so to speak, so. While we're on this, the other thing that, that occurred is that we, we did not receive any asbestos bits for removal, not a one, so. And I contacted five vendors that were on the state bid list. I had two inquiries, but no, no return of those, so. I would like to be able to reach out to the company who provided us the estimate of the survey work, and see if they're interested in doing the cleanup, and I'll get a price for them, bring that back to you, so you know what price they're talking about. So, if, unless I hear any strong objections, I, I'd like to just keep moving down, keep moving that down, so.
Yeah, we've got to get that out of there before we can do any demolition.
So, I'll move that way.
Set and is from the election board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the town, the town clerk has provided me open certificate for Sylvia Perrell to be the election ward for the upcoming election, can you tell me?
Some of, sorry. Yeah, yeah, she's been doing it right along for a while.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, the town clerk has asked for modification to the registrar's hours to be Monday through Thursday from 7:00 to 5:30 here at the here at the municipal building, for the district, RSU 21 District Budget Representatives, state primary election, and the 14th, and all our voting.
I think we've been doing this right along for her, so.
We have, we've done for a while.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve that request.
Second.
I'm sure that, we're not going to tighten up the voting area and make room for the
Yes, sir, that would be, that assumption would be correct.
There's a second question. Those are the valid questions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe I placed them in your packet, the specific questions that we're going to have, I believe there are 12 of them, I put them on double-sided on the sheet, mint sheet at all, maybe to get them all. What we did is we took the guidance from the town attorney to, to put the subject matter for each topic in a, in, in one of the questions. So there's some questions that I may have not placed in this way, but this was the the recommendation from the attorney's office, so I, I put them in, in that format. The other thing I, I did is I, I asked the chairman of the charter committee to take a look at that, and make sure that I didn't miss any in the language and the changes that we were proposing. That was concluded by her, and I think we got, in essence, every, every one that we've been discussing, so. I provided this to the town clerk, she started the process of putting the ballots together to get them emailed to the folks, so. Unless I hear any strong objections or changes that you think we need to make, we're sort of moving down the road that these 12 questions will be the ones that will be on the ballot for the town, for the amendment changes to the municipal charter. The warrant, when we post the warrant, it will have a complete charter on the warrant with the changes in red, so folks, if they look at the, they look at the warrant, they'll see the appendix, see the charter changes, and they will be there, so.
Amendments elsewhere rather than just having to post the warrant.
Yes, we'll, we'll put them on the website, we'll have them there, we can provide handouts.
If we have them in, in the voting area.
I'm not quite sure, let me talk to the clerk about that, if we can, then we certainly will make them available there.
Take with it or something like that.
I don't think we can prohibit anybody from carrying something into the, when they vote, right? I think folks can have, can they have papers in their hands? Not sure. I'll double-check it with her.
So, this is going to be, it's going to be seven or 12, I didn't get.
Maybe 12 of them.
It should be on the back. Yeah, there's nothing on the back.
Yeah, see, I only got the seven.
So, there's going to be 12 questions, there's going to be a secret ballot, and then when we have our town meeting, there's not going to be any, anything to vote on on our town meeting, right, this will all be taken care of.
There you go.
Yep.
Dan, there's the back, that's what the back is like, mine only came up, just, yeah, that's okay. Unless it's at the end, Henry's came next.
Yeah, I, too bad we got to do it this way, but I would prefer that this be done like in an open meeting, but. Yep.
Is everybody's time with the, those questions, okay? Forward. Who's property? Who is it, I had it, what if Tom Cox, I've dumped him for a while.
Oh, okay.
Boyer opened the garment. One of his problems, and that's and everything, and I don't know.
Correct.
The issue that the T N ceased, so it's going to have, the asset is going to end yet, there's
Is it, is it something that you wish us to pursue as an automatic?
Time will, that's, as long as I've been on this board, we never try to hold on to somebody's property, pay their tax, but.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, I have no objections to that. I mean, unfortunately, I was hoping that, while, while Mrs. Carroll was alive, that they would have been able to go ahead and start a prepayment program with us, and that didn't happen. that they would've been able to, uh, go ahead and start a prepayment program with us, and that didn't happen, so. Um, but I don't think we should be having the injections that grandson can pay the outstanding taxes and penalties and whatever recording we have. Okay.
But the deed will be made out to the estate of?
That's good, estate's not the open, so we can pay with the estate.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
I made that a while ago.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Um, yeah, I can't recall exactly what it, which one it was on.
But it was.
Oh, it was that corner piece, that was that piece, uh, on Limerick and Grimstone, wasn't it? That little piece that we wanted to convey, was that it? Maybe not.
I don't remember. But.
Okay.
But Tom's right, we never have held on to a property. So I make a motion that we approve this and get this moved forward.
The other property, can't find anybody?
Nobody is contacting me yet, uh, it's, it's quite unusual, I know. Um, we foreclosed on it, automatic foreclosure was 2020, I believe.
Wow.
So, well, maybe it's 2021, I, I have the paperwork.
Nobody living there?
Um, no, we automatically foreclosed on it February 11th, 2022.
Wow.
So it's just a, it's a recent one. Um, it's in a cul-de-sac. Um, I've driven by several times now to see if I can find somebody there, so I could knock on the door. Have not seen anybody there. I wrote them a letter of last week, just to contact me to, um, to see what they would like to do. Um, haven't not heard anything back yet, so I'll continue to keep going on it. See what we can.
I'm gonna check to see if there's a mortgage on the property.
Okay.
And is there a mailbox out front?
Thanks, get a little nervous about losing security.
Right, right.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do a little bit more research on that. I wasn't in, wasn't advocating now to go ahead and remove this phone, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, 'cause it's so unusual. It's, you know, land is different, but when you're talking about somebody's house, that's a totally different thing, so. I'll keep working on it.
Yeah, title search up in Alfred should show if there's a mortgage.
The next thing to say, it's best gathering, it's application, that, the, trust.
Yes. Believe this is, uh, their second annual, they, they did this last year, uh, this Trail Fest. And they, they utilized our, our facilities here in our parking lot. If you recall, we had the fire chief made sure that we had DMTs here, um, for the event, so and so forth. So I think they just sort of want to duplicate what they had, uh, last year.
Hey, you know, I, I sent out an email to everybody, I do have a concern about 200-plus people. I mean, it's probably not gonna be 200 people that are gonna use it, but, you know, I don't think our restrooms were intended, were built, were intended for mass gatherings. I think, you know, they're, they're intended for when people periodically use the trails, so. I'm not crazy about them using the restrooms, I think they should have porta-potties here, but that's just me.
Yeah, it says the number of people expected at 200, but if they did this last year, and those 200 are here on and off all day, uh, it's a case of having groups here, walking and, and, and leaving, and, but 200 people all at once, uh, especially if they're gonna have overflow parking at Mildred all day, I, I feel the same way about the restrooms.
It's not, you know, that's not the intent, why we made them available to the public, but.
Maybe Henry can answer that, whether or not there's gonna be 200 people out there all at once. I mean, if there's, you know, 40 or 50 people out there all at once, that's one thing. You know, if they come and they stay for an hour or two and then leave, but if they're here, we've got people here all day, and they're gonna have that number of people, especially since they are gonna have some music. Uh, and they might want to look into getting a porta-potty.
The permanent application indicates a unique grant, and then if there's any additional requirements.
Yeah.
Uh, to be, be part of your, uh, part of your approval. And I would suggest that, uh, we could write in there, "Serious consideration should be given to porta-potties brought on-site for the event."
Yeah.
And then I could have a discussion with, uh, with Henry to make sure that, uh, you know, maybe they get a couple, two or three on you, maybe even a handicap one, and maybe a couple in the event that, you know, they need.
Even Heritage Day, we have, I know we have one big one that's handicap accessible. And I'm thinking that that's the only one, and for the number of people that we have that day, that's the only one that we have, is that one big one, because people are coming and going all the time. And if that's the case.
But you guys, the road races here and stuff like this, people aren't gonna be here to, yeah, running the roads, five miles, five days or something like that.
Yeah, but, I mean, Henry would know that, but, I mean, my concern, again, is if you've got 200 people standing out here, and you're gonna have a line in here for the, for the two restrooms.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's a race, and when they're done the race, then people are gonna.
They're gonna run for the restroom.
Run for the restrooms, and, like, that, to me, that just was not the intent why we built that, so. What was the fee associated with this? There's a fee for this, right?
Uh, yes, I think it's, I can all.
Exactly, that's what I, I, that's what I want, I mean, I wanna, I'll make a motion that we waive the fee in the condition, uh, we approve this, but the condition that they supply porta-potties instead of using our restrooms.
Yeah, I'll second that. I, I mean, actually, unless Henry can, can guarantee that there won't be 200 people out there all of a sudden, then, yeah, I think they need at least one restroom, one porta-party out there.
I don't see how we can guarantee that, but.
Yeah.
Well, I think, other than go to this now, why don't we ask, I need to stop by and let's, let's talk about it.
Yeah.
Let's get it out there now and see, we can, might address it, or wanna push back and say, don't worry, folks, we're not gonna have. Why not, I, I don't know, I can, they, when I used to run these kinds of races. I got done, I didn't.
Yeah.
Home and showered, that was, but it.
I think that would be a good test of a brand facility. Find out, if it's gonna handle.
That many.
Or is it not? I think we have a dollar.
Yeah, well, we had problems with it last year, maybe it was all associated to when they had this.
Yeah.
Um, I think when we, when the building was initially, we had some, uh, some sewer gases that we were getting in the building, and we determined that there was a couple locations where when the sheet rockers put up, or they put some shelving up, that they went through some of the vent pipes. So they corrected that. Um, I've had people say they complained a little bit about having a smell in the ladies' room, and I've, I've gone in and not smelled it, so, uh, I think we've sort of taken care of those issues. I haven't had any backups, any, uh, any toilets that have worked properly, went flushed. We had one flushometer in there that had to be replaced, 'cause it wasn't, it wasn't working properly, putting enough pressure down through the pipe, so. Other than that, so far so good.
Yeah, you're right, let's, I'll take that.
You wanna bring Henry in?
Yeah, I'll, I'll hold off on my motion.
Yeah, I'll hold off on my second.
We just have a payable one for.
Yeah, just, just a payable.
Same as.
Second. It's right there in front of, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And the largest check in there is the one that's going to, uh, the funds being returned to the cottages.
Hey. I, I have a, I mean, I have a personnel matter, yeah.
Same as.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah.
Time for you, yeah? Oh, yeah, second.